The next meeting on our docket is a public hearing for the Urbana City Council. It's Monday, August 1st, 2022. And when the clerk's ready, we'll begin. Okay, I'd like to call to order this public hearing. It is to consider a proposed amendment to the Tax Increment Financing (TIF) redevelopment plan and project for the central TIF redevelopment project area. The purpose of the hearing is to receive comments on the proposed amendment to Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and the project. Written comments may also be submitted to the City of Urbana Economic Development Division at 400 South Vine Street, Urbana, Illinois 61801, or by email to slmcmahon@urbanaillinois.us before the close of business on Friday, August 15th, 2022. This hearing is called to order. Will you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is public input on the proposed amendment to the Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and Project. If anyone wishes to address this topic, please step to the microphone and state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Okay, this is for the TIF hearing only. Okay, I don't see anyone wishing to speak to this hearing, so we will adjourn the public hearing. And we'll move on to the final meeting of the evening, and that will be chaired by Council Member Chris Evans.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole for August 1st, 2022. And would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Okay, I want to ask a point of order of our clerk. Can we approve these three sessions, these minutes, at the same time? Or do we need to take them separately? Oh, well, yeah, the next item is approval of minutes for July 5th, 2022, a meeting July 18th, 2022, a public hearing, and then the meeting of July 18th, 2022. And can we do this at the same time? Okay. Does anybody have any significant changes to any of these minutes? Grace?
Sorry, not quite a change, but just wanted to remind us to check the public input. I know there's been a lot of emails to be included, of comments read aloud. I think these are good. I'm confusing it with council input, but just a thing to remind us to maybe try and keep an eye on that public input gets in the record as well. And I think it looks good so far, in case anyone else has anything.
Anybody else have any changes or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of all?
Do you feel like a motion?
Oh, yeah, a motion.
I'll move that we approve the three meeting minutes that Chris listed before.
Hold on a second. Okay. Now, can we all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those against say nay? The ayes have it unanimously. Those minutes are approved. Any additions to the agenda? Sharice?
I was asked to, if there's a possibility to move the discussion item concerning the Dr. Ellis subdivision to maybe right between 5:00 and 6:00 as a discussion item.
Okay, that would be after the Amy Rickman presentation, correct?
Or after the staff report.
Before, before, oh, after staff, okay. Do we need a vote on that, clerk? Oh, go ahead, Diane.
Mr. Chair, I would request that, I understand the request to move the item, but I'd also ask that you consider leaving the agenda as is. We have staff here who need to make these presentations, and I'd like to also be respectful of their time tonight.
Anybody else have any thoughts? So clerk, I guess it's my decision on this? Is that?
Sharice spoke it, and no one seconded it, so it is open as it is being presented tonight.
Okay. Okay, having no second to Sharice's motion, the agenda will stay as is. And that leads us to public input. If anybody would like to address the City Council, please step forward to the microphone. You have five minutes.
Al Mac Sackswade, resident of Urbana, Ward 3. This city has a track record of prioritizing relationships with other governmental entities and their staff over that of the community. I would seriously reflect on that anytime that there is an initiative where there are many elderly people who have been waiting decades for this matter to be seriously addressed, and it not be so. I would also like to emphasize the amount of rigor that's necessary to do well by our community. Christopher Evans, for example, the remark that you made is well-founded when it comes to the SWIFT push, for example, because you don't know, even though they might be in your social circle, that we had met with the director of the SWIFT program and asked if it was okay if we canvassed to increase enrollment. She said yes. The other question that we have on that component about the stipends, that actually came from Carol Ammons making a suggestion. So that is the basis for that. So when the director of the program says that, and then the Board of Trustees say something else, I'm not going to get into the weeds of all that. We definitely need to talk to the Board of Trustees. That's absolutely true. But they are the people who serve us. So when we're making this referendum, we are getting a temperature check, because they are absolutely right, for example, that they are operating within their means when it comes to the Support for Workforce Training Program. However, who are they to say that it's enough to serve our community? It's the people. They are elected by us. So that's sort of the kind of thing that we have to think fully through when it comes to these matters. So when it comes to the matter that's before you tonight, and when people may have to leave before it is heard, you are disenfranchising folks. So please don't use the number of people who have stayed in the room as any basis of your logic tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to address?
Hi, I'm here to talk about the street being named after Angie Heaton. I am a teacher at Urbana High School, just finished my 23rd year, and Angie was one of my best friends. I actually lived with her right over here off of Lynn Street when I first started teaching at Urbana, and then before she passed, she lived with me. So I was blessed to have that time with her. What I would say is that she is one of my best friends, but the thing is, she was a lot of people's best friends, and that was a lot of people, actually more than I thought I even knew about, and I knew her for 23 years. So I am very much in favor of it. Any person that crossed her path, whether it was for 20 seconds in a store, on a street, or for her whole life, was impacted in a positive way because of her. She had a serving heart, a heart of gold. And I would guarantee that if you spoke to somebody just in this community, it would take you about two or three questions to get to somebody who knew her, or you knew somebody who knew her. She was that influential in this area. One of her favorite songs, or my most favorite song she sang, she was a local musician, among many other things, was "It's Easier When You're Here." And for me, it is easier when she was here. But if you were to ask her the one place in her 50 years of life that she would call home, and the place that she impacted the most, she would tell you it would be Urbana, Illinois. So I'm just here to support the street being named after her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan, I would just take the mic.
I'm Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, and I guess we can't go back to try to get it changed so we can have it earlier. But if we can recall when the Public Works Director was unable to come, and then they had to reschedule, we made all kinds of concessions. But we, the people, nobody thinks about us. We're supposed to be the people that hire the staff. It's hard. A lot of people couldn't come because they are worse off than me, if that's possible. But nobody cares about the community, at least certain areas of the community. It's time out for it. It's time out. Things got to change. Things got to change. That's all I can say right now, because I'm really disappointed that nobody would even second a motion.
Hello, my name is Julie Watkins. I am a resident of Urbana, and I'm sorry you didn't move it up for talking about Dr. Ellis, so I will try to be as short as possible. It's an important issue. Sewer pipes are expensive, and it's a public health issue. It's been going for a while, and to make it easier, I think there's, I think part of the issue is with having to do reimbursement instead of upfront, that puts an inhibition. I don't, and it would be better to get a better type of solution. And this is something specifically in the ARP funding direction, and that you've already agreed to on goals. So I hope you can come up with a good thing for this, and I am in support of taking care of the people who, it's been a long issue, and so I know there are other houses that have it, but their houses are older. Thank you.
Eldress Melinda Carr, and I'm here on behalf of the Dr. Ellis Subdivision Committee. This is Part 1 of a petition submitted on August 1st on behalf of the Dr. Ellis Subdivision Committee to support the Dr. Ellis Sewer System Discussion. The petition to support an equitable solution for the Dr. Ellis subdivision infrastructure and prevent sewer problems. Members of the Dr. Ellis Subdivision Committee, in consultation with Councilmember Sharice Hershey and former Councilmember Robert Lewis, have reviewed what transpired in the development of the subdivision, and are in support of the effort to get clarification on past findings. We, the undersigned homeowners/residents of Dr. Ellis subdivision, strongly urge the Committee of the Whole, Urbana City Council, and Mayor Diane Marlin to accept this documentation and establish provisions to bring about restitution of our situation, to make viable solutions using every resource available, including American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, and equity and quality-of-life project funds to make the subdivision what it was designed to be in the site plan. We want to make sure that the July 11th, 2022, update on mayor council goals, strategic goals, includes the Dr. Ellis subdivision and Number 3 infrastructure as part of that document. And since I have a little bit more time, as I was going out Friday, Saturday, and even today, up until 6:00 p.m., in a little time with my grandson, who is seven years old, going door-to-door, hearing the stories of people. One who's been there 50 years, been on boards, old, she says, but she tried to do some things. Still, some of the problems exist. Seen city workers come out, and they leave, and not doing the work that they said they were going to do. I'm one of the persons who moved in 2015 to Dr. Ellis, planted there. I'm not going to be able to tell my story today, but I know restitution needs to be made. Brother Joe Lewis, 10 years ago, so disheartened and discouraged, he gave up. The first time I heard his story, on Saturday, he was sitting out there, nothing's going to be done, they treat us different than they do to other people on the other side of town. I went home in tears. Lord, what are we going to do? This has to stop. There needs to be restitution. So I'm here to stand on behalf of the committee. I didn't do that running around door-to-door for myself only. Some couldn't come out. There was illness, and we had to postpone from July. That's why we're here today, and running around trying to do this petition to support this presentation. And we just hope and pray that you will listen to these things. They've been going on for too long. Too long.
Hello. My name is Sally Mundy. I'm a resident of Urbana, and up until the pandemic, I owned a small business in Urbana, too. Like Angie, I've been in bands and CU and played shows in Urbana. I am here in support of naming an honorary street after Angie Heaton. Sorry. Angie was a bit older than me, and when I was a teenager in the 90s, I looked up to her. I lived in a very small town, and my friends and I would drive to Urbana to go to Parasol Records. That's where I first met Angie. She worked there. I was struggling with being gay, and Angie was one of the first openly gay women I ever met. I hung on to every word she said because she was so cool, and she made me feel like I could be exactly as I was. And I really wanted to be a lot like her. Her kind and gentle spirit, and her courage to be out and proud, made me feel like it gets better. And that was well before what has since become an internationally famous project to uplift LGBTQ youth. A couple of years later, as an adult, I worked with Angie at Parasol in the early aughts. We became friends. I realize now I could not have asked for a better role model, because she was so many things: thoughtful, talented, wise, funny, and above all else, so, so, so kind. Since her passing, I've learned what I kind of already knew, that more people than I can count feel the same way about Angie as I do. She was so important to so many people, and she influenced so many lives in this town and beyond in positive ways. Angie loved Urbana. She even came up with an acronym, which later became a hashtag people call T-Sert. It's now basically a local legend. Its meaning basically sums up to something being very, very Urbana, because Angie recognized that Urbana is a vibe, a special place where special things happen because special people live here. Angie was a very special person. When I think about her, sorry, when I think about her now, I realize she was the definition of an ordinary person, doing incredibly extraordinary things, things that help people change their lives forever. And that made Angie extraordinary. I hope you will approve naming an honorary street in Urbana in honor of Angie Heaton. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to address the council?
I no longer live in Urbana. I now live at 53 Park Street in Hudson, Massachusetts. But I did live in Urbana for many years, and still recognize some of the faces behind these brown walls. I came here tonight to speak about Jim and Dolores Holloman, who now live at Clark Lindsay, and whom I have known since 1983, 1982, '83, which is, I think, is about 40 years ago. I'm 56, going on 57 now myself, so my knowledge of math is getting a little fuzzy. But I noticed, when I was still in Massachusetts, that there was a letter in the News Gazette about Dave Monk. And many of you probably saw it. Dave Monk, Prairie Monk, rings a bell, 90 years old, in his last innings, somebody who contributed a lot to environmental preservation in East Central Illinois. And two people posted, wrote a letter to the News Gazette celebrating his life, even though he's not left us yet. And I thought that was really brilliant. Why do we have to wait for Dave Monk to pass to publicly celebrate his life? So I thought I would come here and celebrate the life of my friends Jim and Dolores Holloman, who came to Urbana in the early 1960s, before I was born. And I just want to lift up a couple of things, obviously, how do you summarize? But one thing that particularly relates to this room is that in the early 1980s, the City of Urbana declared itself to be a city of refuge for refugees fleeing violence in El Salvador and Guatemala. And I think that happened in this room. And I was in this room, or whatever room it was at the time, and so was Jim Holloman. He was the executive director of and campus minister at the Elmo Sybus Foundation, which was a public sanctuary for refugees fleeing violence in El Salvador and Guatemala. And that was the node in this town of that movement. It also included other churches, including the Friends, Frankie Day, Tom Royer at St. Mary's, Claire Zook at Channing Murray, also no longer with us, there were five or six. I don't remember them all. But there was a movement in this community to try to protect Salvadoran and Guatemalan refugees fleeing violence in Central America, which was also trying to critique the Reagan administration's wars in Central America, and explain, use public sanctuary to explain the connection between these two things. Sanctuary, refugees, and international right, and there was a reason that the Reagan administration wouldn't acknowledge that these people were refugees, which was that the U.S. government was supporting the wars in Central America that were making these people refugees. Jim Holloman was a leader of that movement, and there was a bunch of people in this room arguing for that. Not everybody in the room was for that. There were people here who supported the Reagan administration and its policies, and I remember very clearly that Bernadine Stig was sitting right there when some people in the room said, "Why is the Urbana City Council getting involved? And this is none of their business. This is about the federal government." And Bernadine Stig said, "Everybody has a right to speak, and I welcome everyone's public participation, but I have to say that this is exactly something that the Urbana City Council should be doing. These people are residents of our community, and we need to protect their right to refuge." Second thing I want to share is my experience in the last week, visiting my friends Jim and Dolores at Clark Lindsay, and my appreciation for the staff of Clark Lindsay doing an incredibly difficult job under difficult circumstances. And in particular, there, some people say they're short-staffed, but the half-full is I saw them doing all hands on deck and putting residents and visitors to work, including me. So I appreciate their creativity in addressing their tasks. The final thing I want to share is that Dolores told me yesterday that September 6th is their 64th wedding anniversary. And I know that it is sometimes the, that's pretty spectacular. I'm only 56, going on 57. They're about to have their 64th wedding anniversary. So I wanted to float the idea that the Urbana City Council might want to recognize them in some way on September 6th. That's something public bodies often do, in fact, we've seen here tonight, that there is an idea of recognizing a resident of Urbana who's been a leader in our community, and which I was very moved by these presentations, and I would totally support. And I want to float that September 6th would be an appropriate time to recognize the leadership of Jim Holloman and Dolores Holloman in this community. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council?
My name is Elizabeth Madures. I'm a resident of Urbana, and I'm also here to support the naming, the honorary naming of a street after Angie Heaton. Angie was also a friend of mine, and I was involved in music with her, and a lot has been said about her, and I'm sure Amy Rickman is going to say more. But one thing that I wanted to observe about Angie is that she is somebody who struggled with addiction, and when she got sober, she really supported other people in Urbana who are struggling to get sober. So I know a number of people who told me, who I didn't even know knew Angie, and after she died, they reached out to me, you know, in condolence. And more than one person said, "Angie drove me to my first AA meeting." So I think she's a complicated person, who has a lot of wonderful qualities, has been an inspiration as a musician, as an LGBTQ role model, but I think also, I want to just observe her important role as someone who got sober and kind of passed on her wisdom and her support to help others get sober as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, that closes public input. Yep, we now have a presentation, a proposal requesting Urbana to adopt an honorary street alley program, and to name a street after Urbana leader Angie Heaton. I'd like to invite Amy Rickman, and she is taking the front desk there. And as soon as you're ready to go, Amy, you have the floor. Maybe try the other mic.
Is this better?
Okay, now it's going.
I didn't push, thank you. So thank you so much again for having me here today. I want to especially thank Councilmember Evans for helping us move this proposal forward. My name is Amy Rickman. I am a proud Urbana resident. I'm here today to ask Urbana City Council to establish an honorary street and alley naming program, and through it to designate Angie Heaton Drive in commemoration of our beloved Urbana musician and cultural ambassador Angie Heaton, who we tragically lost to breast cancer in 2020, far too young. In the 10 minutes I've been given for this proposal, I will provide a broad overview of honorary street naming programs, and explain why a street should be named after Urbana hero Angie Heaton. I'll move quickly to fit it all in, but I'm happy to take questions or expand on anything that I covered at the end. So first of all, So first of all, why is it needed? An honorary street naming program. Currently, Urbana does have streets named in honor of people with ties to our town who have made a significant impact. But these streets recognize only a very narrow swath of people who have impacted our community. They do not honor the diversity that Urbana itself proudly claims and celebrates. Instead, Urbana streets overwhelmingly center males, those who are wealthy, those who are white, those who are conservative, heterosexual, and elite. In doing so, they leave out many who have contributed to Urbana's cultural, humanitarian, and historic brilliance. They misrepresent who our local leaders are and who they have been, making it very difficult to know Urbana's vibrant history, and to celebrate the significant contributions of our self-proclaimed, richly diverse population. Street names impact collective memory as part of cultural cognition. Through this, they could contribute to wider efforts towards social equity or inequity. Dozens of honorary street naming programs exist in towns and cities throughout Illinois, and many more across the country, in places like New York City, Baltimore, Boston, Houston, Memphis, New Orleans, Milwaukee, Dallas, San Diego, and Arlington, Texas, just to name a few. Some of Urbana's closest peer cities have street naming programs, such as Peoria and Decatur. Bloomington hosted an event earlier this summer to unveil their two newest honorary street signs commemorating social justice and civil rights leaders. And of course, our sister city, Champaign, has a program as well. These programs memorialize remarkable community members. They also enable the city to celebrate and cherish their own remarkable history and brilliance. Urbana should have a program like this. So generally, honorary street naming programs have some parameters, and so I'm going to go over generally, very quickly, program parameters, costs, additional details. So program parameters, normally, a program like this needs a name of an honoree, a block named, and somebody has to address how the honoree meets criteria, who's eligible to have honorary streets named after them. I've looked at many, many programs across the nation, and these requirements vary across programs, but there is a lot of consistency. This is what New Orleans says, that the potential honoree must have made a demonstrable and significant positive impact on the community, or contributed to the cultural, economic, educational, intellectual, political, scientific vitality of the community, or made an extraordinary contribution in the service of humanity. Must be a natural person. So, and there's the variations here. Some are more overt and clear of what they're looking for, some are more detailed. But overall, these programs align around saying that they honor people who have done significant contributions around culture, history, and humanitarianism of the area. It's somebody who has geographic ties to the area and to that particular street. Most commonly, it's a person, though some cities allow organizations to be recognized as well. And it's typically a person who has passed away, though, as mentioned earlier by Mr. Nyman, it does not have to be. Champaign, of course, like I mentioned, has, our sister city, has a program, which we are very fortunate to be able to learn from. And they have very specific guidelines for who they honor, how they honor them. And this is something that I provided you in the handout, that we can and should follow. Beyond that, program costs. The program, program like this does cost money. There's labor in putting up signs and making signs. And there was an article in the News Gazette that estimated, gave a number. I don't know where that number came from. I didn't hear of any other city, even big cities, that spent that much on the sign. City of Wilmington, some of the places do not charge a fee. Wilmington says there's no fee associated at all. A number of them do, but most cities do charge a fee to applicants who want to honor somebody, and they have that as part of the application. For example, Evanston, Illinois, has a $200 fee for applicants who are chosen to be honored, and they have a fiscal year 2020 budget of $58,000, to give an estimate of how they've done it. And we have many to learn from who have well documented how these programs work. Milwaukee charges $300, $100 application fee, which is returnable if it's not accepted, and $200 for the signs. Yes. And so a few other details. So most people have, applicants who are accepted pay towards this, to support this. It's not all coming from city coffers, though the city does also contribute, and that varies. Additional details, there's usually an application. All the programs involve an application, and the questions are, again, quite consistent. They're asking for the same thing. And I have copies of these, and I'm happy to provide to you in moving forward. Also, selection committee is involved in these range. Some selection committees involve an actual committee, such as Decatur here. Others, like Bridge Court, Connecticut, has an administrator in charge, and through that, the administrator sends it on the city council. So these things vary. Champaign, again, who we might follow, has its own guidelines that we might emulate or might not, but that's up to the city to decide. And who might be commemorated is another question. Many people, we have many luminaries locally, who can and should be recognized, so we continue to celebrate them. William Suberville, amazing musician, who inspired so many, as an instructor locally. Bernadine Stake, as mentioned earlier, Roger Ebert, Helen Satherwaite, Paul Worth, and Angie Heaton. But this is just a small swath of the people who can and should be celebrated as part of our richly diverse population that Urbana itself claims and celebrates. And so who is Angie Heaton, and why should she be celebrated? So Angie was a beloved musician, singer-songwriter, and a powerful cultural ambassador of Urbana, who made significant contributions to the city. She tragically passed away in 2020. She was a pillar of the Urbana music community. She was also an active community member in many areas. She was a core drum instructor for Girlzone, the grassroots Champaign-Urbana organization that I helped to co-found and direct, and a number of people in this room volunteered for, to help girls explore and celebrate their talents. Angie offered drumming lessons, and so she was one of our main drumming instructors, and she's brilliant in this role, enthusiastically sharing her skills and warmth while inspiring future generations' involvement in and appreciation of music and community. Angie played shows regularly in Urbana. It's not an exaggeration also to say that she was an Urbana icon. She played in many bands, and these bands made waves within Champaign-Urbana, but well outside, known nationally. And she's recognized as part of the herald in 1990's Champaign sound. Angie Heaton and the Gentle Tamers was her main band throughout her four decades here, and her performances were a staple of Urbana spaces, going back to Trino's and the Embassy, as she merged folk, rock, country, and curious communities of all ages together in embracing spaces created by her earnestly powerful music and personality. As a woman and a proud member of the LGBTQ community, Angie was also a humble, yet seismically impactful leader for so many others, providing a strong role model for girls and women to put their thoughts to music, to find their own way to the spotlight, and to see someone like them as comfortable taking center stage in their own town, as we heard today. She's one of the first openly lesbian musicians in CU, which we don't remember how it was so brave. And she stood strong and leading with love, and in claiming who she was, despite normalized hetero-prejudice, homophobia, and hate. She made Urbana a better place through her music, her spirit, her wit, her welcome, and her magical presence. Beyond this, Angie had deep and vocal love for Urbana. It was Angie who began the popular hashtag #TSUSRT, which means "That's some Urbana" right there, used to tag cute, creative, artistic, and clever parts of Urbana, such as tree stumps made to look like little elf homes, among so many other things. Angie started this trend. She loved Urbana. Angie embodied the spirit of Urbana. She was community-minded, welcoming, creative, talented, wise, full of character, brilliant, but immensely humble, welcoming, and down-to-earth. She sparkled in the spotlight, but she also shared it. She made us all more aware of the abundant goodness that we have all around us. So earlier this year, we began circulating a petition, asking the city of Urbana to begin an honorary streets or alley naming program, and to name a street in honor of Angie. And includes what I just told you about Angie. It also states, "We, the undersigned column, the city of Urbana, Illinois, began a street alley commemoration program, and to designate Angie Heaton Drive within the city to celebrate singer-songwriter Angie Heaton's great leadership and impactful contribution to the beauty and vibrance of our community. Unlike the city of Champaign, the city of Urbana does not yet have a street commemoration program honoring local leaders who have passed away. This keeps Urbana from recognizing, remembering, and celebrating both our history and those who have contributed to the public good. We ask the city of Urbana to launch this program and to commemorate Angie Heaton Drive in Urbana, near to where live music is played." So that's what the petition said. We collected those individually, but also Urbana businesses hosted them. So they were at Art Coop, they were at the Rose Bowl, they were at Record Swap. People stopped into local businesses to support Angie, and also supported local businesses as part of that. 138 Urbana residents signed the petitions, which I will hand over to you, and a number of people outside of Urbana also sent in letters of support. So I can hand this to the speaker. So we ask Urbana to establish an honorary street naming program to name an Urbana street or alley after our dear Angie Heaton, who contributed so much to Urbana's unique cultural brilliance. The city will decide on the parameters of this. We think it's very important that locals decide what works locally. But that said, I have five recommendations. First of all, establish the program, please. And these recommendations are on the document that I handed to you. Secondly, make sure that the program is economically and politically accessible to the diversity of our community, and that means a number of things. First of all, considering the fee, like I mentioned, most charge a nominal fee to people who are applying. San Diego used to charge $25,000, $2,500 as a review fee, and $1,200 in addition to the installation fees of $120 to $283. In 2016, though, they reviewed their program and changed it. So now they only charge the installation fees, which, again, cost, they say, between $120 and $283. So they did that to address the fact that they were getting a very, again, narrow swath of who was being celebrated. So I encourage that. But also, to be politically accessible, please have explicit guidelines outlining requirements and clear application processes. Champaign has a great process, and they recently revised it in 2017, so we could learn from them learning. I recommend that you do not have a petition requirement where people around the block have to sign, because that's been found by other areas, to really make it not possible to do this program, unless you are some very politically powerful. And I also recommend having a diverse committee involved in the selection, and being sure that there's diverse inclusion of honorees. We don't, we want to be sure that we celebrate Urbana for its brilliant diversity and all of its people. Secondly, or thirdly, I recommend standardizing the honorary streets, and that means thinking about a time limit. Champaign has a 10-year time limit. Some areas have no time limit. One year, some do, but that would just be so much labor for you. So 25 years, maybe, but I recommend thinking about that. And also, an annual limit of how many you might want to consider a year, because it is labor from public works and other areas. And again, Champaign has a model that you might follow there. I recommend considering block length. One block is what almost all programs do. And then think about the color of the sign, so that it does not interfere with the regular signage. Some of the programs initially replace the signs, but we don't want to do that. The signs stay, just like REO Speedwagon Way. Downtown Champaign, it always was still Main Street. It would never change. Both exist. And Dallas and San Diego have some good examples of how they've done that. Fourth, include educational component with this. So I recommend having an informational plaque on the block, so that people could know what this street means, what, who this person is. And having a ribbon-cutting ceremony to bring people together around this honoring, so we could focus on it together. Also, city of Urbana is recommended to have a website where the locations of these honorary streets are, and perhaps additional information. Champaign has this. But also on that website, it could direct people who do not meet the requirement to the other programs you have, like the honorary bench or tree naming, where people could also honor. And I'm in my last moments here. Lastly, I recommend, a recommendation to name Goose Alley in Urbana, Angie Heaton Drive. And so this is right near where music happens. This is a recommendation. We have strong role models to learn from and to follow with Champaign, and I've provided you with Champaign's code, municipal code. And we also have Urbana businesses that could support the program. American Dowell Sign Company is in Urbana, and they make these signs. And I spoke to the president just today, and he said the sign could be made for $120. If there's six or more made, it would be cheaper than this. And he also could assist in, and that's right in line with other programs, but they could also assist with the brackets and the other things needed to put these signs up. So I've provided the city with this information. I also have a lot more information. If it could be useful, please do let me know. But thank you so much for your time and consideration of this proposal.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions that anybody has? Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. I think question maybe more to executive and staff, but of how something like this would be done, like what would need to happen for that? Is this a resolution or part of a city code? Or if we need to get back on that, that's also understandable.
This is an item up for discussion tonight, but what is being asked here is to develop and implement an entirely new program in the city of Urbana. So that is not something that happens quickly. But that's, that's what's being asked here. So we would have to get back to you with a response. I would, I would say these, this is coming at a time when I have 15 vacancies in the Public Works Department, which is where these signs are made. So this is not, not, not any, no comment whatsoever, other than greatest respect for Angie Heaton and everything she accomplished. But this is coming at a time when we are very short-staffed in the city of Urbana. The city council just passed a long list of city council goals that the staff is working on implementing. So what's being asked here tonight is to implement an entirely new program, and that has implications. But we can get back to you with a full response. And that's about all I can say tonight. But this, this is, what you're asking is for a new program, and it means something else would have to be put aside in order to do that. So it would be a choice that the council would have to make.
Anybody else have a question? Go ahead, James.
So because there is a ordinance that was written in compliance with state law in the city of Champaign, if a couple of council members wanted to take that ordinance and work with it, and review the criteria on it, and provide a suggestion of what it might look like for Urbana, would that be a helpful step in the near term, so as to not take staff time? Eventually, it will. There's no doubt about it. But I'm not completely familiar with Champaign's process, and I would be willing to be one of maybe two council members that would be willing to go down that path, so that we're not starting from scratch when it has to go into staff's hands.
That's part of the problem. That's part of the challenge. The bigger challenge, though, is the long-term sustainability and implementation and day-to-day operation of the program. And that's where we simply do not have the staff at this time to do. But, so developing the program is one thing, but actually putting it into place is the challenge for us right now. And, and it's not anything to do with the people who would be honored. It is simply our ability to implement and carry out this program, when there are so many other things that are falling by the wayside at this point.
Charisse?
I just want to say something real quick, because this is a presentation and not a discussion, and I would like to move on to the next thing, because I also have a presentation that is a discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, Amy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move on to the next thing. And that is a staff report. Go ahead, Diane.
Two quick things. Thank you, Amy, for all the work that you've put into this.
Thank you so much.
We'll get back to you. Two quick things. One is we're getting ready to reissue the RFP for the public safety review. As you recall, a while back, that was done. There were no responses. We've revamped the, the RFP, and it's ready to go out again. And next week, there will be a report by the IT department on the timeline for upgrades to the audio equipment here in the council chambers, as well as the live stream feed. People have been complaining about some issues with the live stream, and we're taking steps to address that as well. Sanford House will be given a report on that next week.
Thank you. Carol, did you have anything? Okay. All right, so that leads to the next item on the agenda, which is the Economic Development Staff Report. I see Andrea Rudy is set up with Darius White and Stephanie McMahon, so you guys have the floor.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate the opportunity to share our staff work plan with you. I'm Andrea Rudy, and I'm the, oh, sorry, my voice is loud. Probably not loud enough for the, the recording. Well, again, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to present the staff work plan to you for economic development. I'm Andrea Rudy, and I'm the Strategic Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development with the city, and I'll let Steph.
I'm Stephanie McMahon, Economic Development Supervisor with the Economic Development Division.
Darius White, Economic Development Coordinator.
So you might say, why we're calling this the interim Economic Development Work Plan? Well, as you know, one of the challenges that we faced, actually, for the past two years, has been the pandemic, which created all sorts of issues for everyone in our community. But just in the, in forms of economic development, we But just in forms of economic development, we really had to shift our focus and focus on our existing businesses and supporting them. So we spent a lot of time on that initially during the pandemic. But it really gave us some time to reevaluate what were the priorities should be for our economic development plan. And then second, of course, is our comprehensive plan that's underway right now. So it's not going to be ready for probably another 18 months to 24 months. And so we didn't want to have, you know, change our plan too much, because we may be, when the comprehensive plan comes out, you know, things may change. We may have different priorities at that time. So we wanted to have something in the interim and start from there. So we did some evaluation on what our goals should be for this period. And one is we thought that we needed to focus on outcomes that could be feasibly accomplished before the comprehensive plan's completion. If it took too long, then it might be overlap with the comp plan and the goals and objectives there. So it needed to be these easily achievable outcomes. Next was leveraging our existing assets. And this is in several regards, you know, not only infrastructure that would already be existing for different projects, but also building on the momentum that was created by recent developments in Urbana. And we've listed some of them here, and Steph will go into those in more detail. Hotel Royer, The Bind, some of these other developments that we've had. And then giving us a chance to look at alternative methods. Because we wanted to focus on some of these short-term objectives, we are trying to look at other ways to be more efficient with our resources, staff time as well as financial resources. So hopefully, some of these things that evolve during the interim process are things that we can carry over. Or they might be things we decide, you know, well, that didn't really work the way we thought. And so it's very low risk at this point during this interim process. So Steph's going to talk about the recent projects in Urbana.
Yeah, and I don't think any of these are new to you. I was just going to tell you a little bit about what was developed and some of the tools used to develop these. Obviously, you're very aware of the Hotel Royer that's being built right now or renovated right now, on target to be done, completed by the end of December. And this project does have a redevelopment agreement with the city, whereby the city would reimburse 5.5 million in eligible TIF costs upon completion, and they would have to turn in copies of receipts of those eligible costs when done. So there is an agreement with Icon Hospitality for that project. The Gather Project, which is on the corner of Lincoln and University, mixed-use redevelopment agreement, or mixed-use development with 229 rental units and 28 extended-stay hotel units. That project was eligible for our enterprise zone incentives, and so they were able to receive sales tax abatement on building materials. And the north, for the north side of the hotel, which is in the enterprise zone, because it's a mixed-use project. And they also have, you know, some retail space in there with the Bake Lab, and those extended hotel stays makes the square footage of that project eligible for, because multifamily residential is not eligible, but because they have the mixed use, it is. So that north side of the project is also going to receive property tax abatement over a five-year period. The 200 Vine Street Apartments, of course, a very successful development with 42 units that were leased from the day they opened. That project also has a redevelopment agreement with the city, whereby they'll be reimbursed eligible TIF cost, but through property tax that the city receives through the TIF over a five-year decreasing, stepping down. 100% the first year, 80% the second. The Cohen Building, Dan Maloney has been working on that project for a couple of years. He's already received TIF reimbursement on eligible costs for the first four phases of the project. He will receive another reimbursement after Secura, the restaurant, is open for one full year and a second final payment when it's been open for two full years. And then finally, the Den on University is another great project that had 76 residential units. And that project was not in a city TIF or enterprise zone, and so they did not receive any incentives from the city. Go ahead.
To give you some background, to give you some background before we talk about the priority areas that we have in our interim plan, we wanted to just refresh your memory on just identifying our current business corridors. You can see these highlighted in the different colors. Downtown, of course, is here. The Philo Road, Windsor Road area, University Avenue, Five Points. And then the Cunningham Avenue, Route 45 corridor is another business corridor, of course, here in Urbana. We also wanted to show you the land used in Urbana. So this color map shows what is commercial, what is industrial, residential, what is ag within our city limits, also institutional and civic and open spaces. And you can see that we've got a note here that tax-exempt land is 26% of the land within Urbana. So it's more, that makes it even more important for us to focus our economic development efforts that will increase revenue, both in sales and property taxes, as well as generate consumer traffic in our community. And so we're going to go and talk about, Darius is going to talk about, our first priority area, which is downtown Urbana.
How do you get back? Oh, thank you. So our first priority area we're looking at is the downtown Urbana. It is broken down into two areas, as you see on the map here. The inner core, which is centered for Hotel Royer, and is roughly a block or two expanded in each direction. And then you have the outer limits. This area is bounded by University Avenue to the north, Urbana Avenue at your east, California Avenue to the south, and Cedar Street to the west. But we also have more westward expansion, extension, excuse me, to include World Harvest in the downtown area. As we all know, the downtown is a special place for Urbana, and it's really the heart of Urbana. The staff is working to support existing businesses, as well as grow retail, restaurants, and entertainment for the city to actively attract patrons. There are several sites and many development and leasing opportunities in the downtown area. Downtown is the core of our community and the hub of our entertainment. Some of our desired outcomes for this priority area, we hope to ensure the success, to ensure the successful development of Hotel Royer, create a vibrant core area that will enhance Hotel Royer's appeal to visitors and residents alike, create an opportunity for downtown leisure and discretionary spending. And this is due to, Urbana is becoming more popular for live music and entertainment, and we hope to expand on that momentum by working to support and attract venues that will attract audiences of all ages. We will gradually replace or relocate low-traffic businesses with ground-floor retail, as well as high-trafficking businesses. We hope to create a destination identity to incorporate Urbana arts and culture, as well as to connect the market at the Square patrons to more and other downtown businesses. Understand the public space needs, correct identified deficiencies, and invest in opportunities. And that's being done through our Downtown Public Realm Study. This study was kicked off of the week of July 15. It's being led by Confluence and Project for Public Spaces. They did come to town, and they started the process of gathering public information and input on how publicly-owned property could be better used to support activation, as well as commerce. The study will continue for the next few months, and we do plan to bring the results to City Council. Also with that study, there has been an advisory committee formed. It does include business and property owners, as well as two City Council members. And that is being created so that we can continue to have ongoing feedback as the city decides how to move forward with the study recommendations. And more, we also looked for an outcome of more residential units with mixed units, with the emphasis on market rate. The tools that we will be using to accomplish our desired outcomes is the completion of the Downtown Public Realm Study to understand the public spaces and how it can be used to better benefit our businesses, residents, and visitors. We'll be using our TIF RIP, which is our redevelopment incentive program. And with that, it provides a reimbursement of eligible TIF expenses on renovation projects. That maximum amount of $25,000 has been expanded to $35,000 now. And then we also have began to offer our new commercial signage grant, which will also be promoted to the businesses to help them with the expanding or improving of any signage for their buildings. We will be reviewing development agreements and zoning guidelines. Enterprise zone incentives, we'll look into how we can better utilize that. Target recruitment campaign to attract music, nightlife, and family-focused businesses, as well as utilize our Small City Big Life marketing campaign to attract tourism, and then provide grant funds to qualified affordable housing projects.
I'm going to talk about our second priority area, which is the Windsor Road Emerging Business District. And I'm just going to sidebar here a little to let you know, we're supporting businesses throughout all of our commercial districts. We just, when we were putting together our plan, we were looking for some areas we could get some quick wins and experiment with. And that's why these priority areas were chosen for some targeted development. We also felt some of the areas we hadn't chosen were probably going to be brought up in the comprehensive plan. So for the Windsor Road Emerging District, that includes the area that is currently housed with Meyer and the Meyer Properties and the Pines. So this is South Urbana, on Windsor Road and Philo Road. So this area, we see a lot of opportunity, because it's already had some good moderate success with Meyers there. And with the Pines, there's already commercial retail space available, and as well as medical with Carl and Christie. We definitely see opportunity to grow this more because of the continued growth of the housing market, especially in Stone Creek, South Ridge, and Myra Ridge subdivisions. So staff is working to attract businesses seeking to be near that growing market. We did purchase software called Placer AI, which is a new geo-fencing software. It's being used to help us determine what businesses would be a good fit in this area, as well as all of our priority areas, so we could start a targeted marketing campaign to bring those businesses here or try to attract them to Urbana. So with that in mind, we just issued an RFP, a request for proposal, for a new marketing firm to help develop a professional campaign to attract businesses to those targeted areas of the community. The new campaign will also create a destination identity for the community and will be used to attract visitors, including day trippers and overnight travelers. These may be coming to Hotel Royer. They might be coming to the Ranthuell Sports Complex, U of I events, you guys know them all. And finally, the new marketing will also be used to encourage young professionals, families, and active retirees to move to Urbana and shop local. The deadline for this RFP is August 19, after which staff will score and interview finalists before selecting a firm to work with. So we'll be bringing you a lot of information from the results of that RFP and the marketing campaign as we move forward.
So our next priority area is, I mentioned before, the Cunningham Avenue, US 45 in the intersection of I-94. So this area, you know, I know you all are familiar with. You can see Napleton's on here, Farm and Fleet. It goes up Route 45, and there's several properties within this market area that are available. And they're owned privately, of course, but they are available for development. So there's some major positive factors for this area. We've already mentioned, as Steph said, is the Ranthuell Sports Complex, which is just right up the road. And we've already seen a lot of hotel rooms from that. The figures for Ranthuell, I think, is that they need 800 rooms a weekend for some of the events up there. And so those people are coming to Urbana. We benefit because it's right down 45. You know, they don't even have to get on the interstate. So the Ranthuell Sports Complex is a big factor in this area. We think will increase the demand for property there. There is, as I stated, developable land already there. And then, of course, the adjacency to I-74 for travelers and visitors to our community. What we'd like to see happen here is we want to see some high-performing businesses that can drive revenue growth. So bring property tax revenue, as well as retail sales tax revenue to that area. Again, I talked about capitalizing on the sports complex. We'd like to see commercial development that's centered around destination and entertainment in that area. Again, not only for the Ranthuell Sports Complex visitors. They're looking for things to do while people are in the events up there, but also just visitors in general. It's right off the interstate, and we'd like to capitalize on those that are passing through our community, too, to make them stop and utilize some of our resources. A couple of things that we've identified that we'd really like to attract to that area, and we've already had some proactive efforts along those lines, is a regional travel plaza. Some of you may know that there's not anything in our immediate area for trucks to park at overnight. They're going to Danville, they're going to Tuscola, they're going to Bloomington to park overnight, because we don't have any place for them to do that except on private properties, you know, some parking lots here and there. So we'd like to see a travel plaza, and we'd like to see a hotel up there. And so we already had a hotel market demand study done earlier this year. It's been shared with, we've shared it extensively with developers in that area, hotel franchisees, those that have done business in our area before, as well as new ones in the market. So that's something that we're actively, proactively going after, our hotels. We've got some rebate development agreements that we can use this tool. We've already mentioned enterprise zone. Most of that area is in the enterprise zone. Again, I mentioned how we're really targeting efforts for that area. We've been targeting travel plaza owners, you know, those that are in the area. We've had some positive responses there, so we're hoping to see something happen. We've also are partnering with brokers, trying to make sure that they're aware of the properties that are available in Urbana so that they can be promoting them and that we're on their shortlist. And we've already mentioned, TIF RIP programs is also a tool for that area. So we mentioned these three priority areas, but as Steph said, there are other areas that are, we're not going to not promote in Urbana. Whenever we have inquiries, all our properties are part of that process that we share. So I'm just going to highlight some of those that they're not in these targeted areas, but they have high potential for development. One is Bradley Avenue near Lincoln Avenue, and there's a map or picture here that shows that. You can see Lincoln would run the street that's in the corner up. It would, of course, runs north-south, and then the east-west is Bradley. There's almost 12 acres there that's privately owned, but for development. We've worked with the broker there. We've mentioned it to other brokers, as prospects come to town that would fit the profile for that area. We've talked with them about it. We've had extensive conversations with the neighborhood, Dr. Ellis in particular. What they'd like to see in that area is local services for that neighborhood, a grocery, affordable housing, a bank, and community services. So as we're talking with anybody that's interested in that property, we're telling them that this is what the neighborhood wants, and that to obtain approval for a project there, you know, they really need to be thinking about what the community is, because that's going to increase their chances of getting a project approved for that area. Another one is the Menards Outlets. Not everybody's familiar with that, but Menards had purchased ground on High Cross Road for a future Menard store with outlets. But they also have land across the road, which is on the west side of the road, that they had planned a residential development. Their plans have been kind of in flux. They have not moved forward with that. But, so we're marketing that property, the outlets around Menards, as well as that property across the, on the other side, on High Cross Road. Another area is, this is probably not on everybody's radar either, but it's on Federal Drive, and it's just south of I-74. There's almost a little over 11 acres there. It's zoned for multifamily. And one of the reasons it's attractive to developers is because it's in the opportunity zone. And we have investors that are looking just to go into areas that fall into the opportunity zone. So we've identified the properties that are available, and that's on our list. When anybody talks about opportunity zones, we'll, of course, talk about, this is one of those properties. That particular property is also in the enterprise zone. And then just the stabilization of Philo Road is something that is high on our radar also, even though it doesn't quite fall into, northern Philo Road doesn't quite fall in- even though it doesn't quite fall into, northern Philo Road doesn't quite fall into that target area. It's, most of the properties there are zoned general business and they are in the enterprise zone. And so we are trying to fill those spaces. We're working with the landlords there to help fill the spaces as well. So that's just an overview of the interim plan. We'd be delighted to answer any questions that you have. It's a lot of information. We can always follow up with any other information and if there's any questions, we'd be glad to entertain those.
Any questions? Oh, sorry. There you are.
I just, I would like to get a copy of your PowerPoint.
Yeah, the PowerPoint, absolutely. We'll make sure everybody has a copy of that.
It's a lot of information to try to take in. So I would like to do that. But also, I want to thank you too for pushing and letting, at least giving me an update regarding the area in Ward Three that I have been pushing for about four years, three years, about grocery stores, so on and so forth, and thank you for continuing with that.
We appreciate that. And we don't have control over what exactly developer gets, is attracted to that area, but we're certainly pushing that and making sure that those businesses that we want there are aware of that property and trying to coach these brokers that, hey, your chances of getting something developed there would be increased if you incorporate these other services.
Thank you.
Okay, Maryelle?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Sharice, it's a lot of information to process. Two words that you continued to kind of use throughout your presentation were enterprise zone and opportunity zone. So I'm wondering if you could speak very briefly, high level, what's the difference between those programs? Who has control over the designation of those programs? That would be helpful.
Sure, the enterprise zone is a program that I administer that business development can apply to receive sales tax abatement on building materials. So they don't have to pay sales tax on building materials for that project. And they have an application they have to fill out for us and a fee that they pay and the contractor and all the subcontractors, then if they apply to the program, don't have to pay sales tax on their building materials. So that saves them eight or nine percent there in their costs. And then eligible projects can also receive property tax abatement over five years. So the first year, they would get 100% abatement from participating taxing bodies, which isn't everybody, but it's most of the biggies. And then the second year, 80%, 60%, 40%, 20%. Some projects, if they hired enough employees, could get a sixth or seventh year. That's not something I've seen a lot of. So we have the Think Urbana that these programs are available for houses, but then we also have them for commercial. And that's a program that we had to apply to create legislatively through the state, but then we administer it ourselves.
So just, I mean, that was one of the things I was thinking about was Think Urbana. So this is the, this is the parallel to Think Urbana for businesses?
Absolutely.
Okay. And since we're abating property taxes and we have many taxing bodies within our community, does that mean that all the taxing bodies have to sign off on these are the criteria that we would?
They've agreed on that, they've agreed to participate and that's all outlined in our application and our policies in there. They signed on when we created the program or when it was created years ago. So like the school district, of course, is the big taxing body that participates, the city, the county, Parkland, and who am I missing?
Has there been any conversation in terms of updating that, based on updating the areas that are considered?
We could change the map. It's a longer legislative process and there's a high cost to doing that because we'd have to go through a lot of changes to, you know, change it legislatively, change our maps, change our program.
And when you say legislatively, you mean the state?
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So if the city would want to do that, we would have to work out why and how we wanted to expand it. And it would be a long, multi-month process, maybe even a year-long process to change that. And I would have to learn more about what that would involve, maybe even bring in a consultant, you know, an expert on how to do that. But it's not, change the, we have people call and say, why can't my building be included? Well, what was set up 15 years ago when the enterprise zone was developed? If you were outside that boundary, it's not just, oh, well, we can decide tomorrow to add your house or add, you know, add your business, it's not as easy as that.
Okay, and then the opportunity zone?
The opportunity zone is a, I'm going to say state or federal program that has to do with tax credits that developers can apply to receive tax credits for their development. And we aren't really involved in that other than promoting the program. We usually suggest people check with their financial advisors and, you know, how to get those tax credits through the federal government for their project.
And those opportunity zones were determined by the state. The local community didn't have any input into that process of what was selected in our community to fall within those enterprise zones, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go with Shandra first. All right, Jay, okay, Jay, go ahead.
We're all just going to help you. So thank you for this presentation. Can you talk a little bit about incentives that exist for like local, smaller businesses? We've seen a lot of local businesses, obviously ongoing impact of the pandemic. We're seeing a lot of, what were mainstays closing in downtown Urbana, for example. A lot of this seemed to focus kind of more on like bringing bigger business in, which makes sense from that taxing perspective, but also want to hear more about what we're doing to support our local, smaller businesses.
So for more, majority of our small businesses, we at one point did have our business opening and business development grant, which really focused on startups. As of now, we do have our commercial signage grant, which is available to any business within the TIF zone. There's a few that's not eligible, like franchises for one and non-for-profits. But this is something that will help more businesses than we saw with our business opening and development. And as we try to attract more patrons downtown and tourism and with the buildup of hotel, or excuse me, renovation of Hotel Royer, this gives a great opportunity for our existing businesses to upgrade their signage and get a little bit more appealing to those that we're trying to attract. Outside of that, we do push all of our county programs that are being offered. We partner a lot with our SBDC and EDC to push anything that they have. We also have the university who has a better initiative on community outreach. So if we ourselves are not providing a resource, we definitely do reach out to our county to see what's happening. And I know with the approval of Justine Peterson, that will be a huge asset to our small businesses.
Can I, can I just add a word too? Maybe Stephanie, you could add how much money we pushed out, whether you were administering it or whether people were accessing it through the state for pandemic relief?
We did administer COVID grants and I'm trying to remember how much money, 300,000? Three, it was 3 million, that we received COVID relief funds that were for businesses and we administered that ourselves. They, we got so much money, we received so much money and the business applied to us through a program we created. And that was all sent out to, do you guys remember how many? 50-some businesses all got grants up to $20,000. So it was anywhere from like 3,000 to 20,000. They had to turn in eligible, they had to turn in receipts for COVID-related expenses. But we covered everything from masks up to a delivery car for one person, and that was state money.
And we can provide that list, we have that list of who received those funds so that you can see what businesses benefited from that?
I remember seeing that previously, but I do want to clarify, I mean, and some of this is, you know, as we continue to think about ARPA funding and we're still in this pandemic, businesses are still hurting. Aside from signage, we are not offering something through the city for smaller, local businesses, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's important as we're making ARPA decisions, thank you.
We really appreciate you making that part of your plans.
Yes, thank you for the information. Look forward to reading a little bit more as you send the PowerPoint. One question, is there a plan to fill like existent vacant storefronts? Because we, thinking of downtown, there are, you know, a lot of different businesses that have closed. And if you're a patron walking around downtown, like it can be a long walk between open businesses. So I want to make sure that like you're promoting, you know, future businesses to fill existing sites as well.
Yes, we definitely are working with property owners with providing them with business leads that come our way as far as any interest in any downtown location in particular. I know it was very a shock for us to see some of our staple businesses close within the last two months. But even connecting with them and getting information from them, none of them closed because of just the pandemic or due to low traffic. There were either personal family concerns, there was either staffing of someone that had, like a head chef leaving and people just feeling like they couldn't take on the additional capacity without that individual. So even with things such as Dancing Dog or Crane Alley leaving, when you look at the downtown area and if we expand just a little bit outside of that, when you look as north as the Five Point areas, both Five Point East and West, go as south as Lincoln Square Mall and you will actually have, we have roughly about 40 businesses, or excuse me, 40 restaurants. So I think our bigger issue is trying to get staffing for them so that they can open back up to those pre-pandemic hours. But we do still have a lot of great options for eatery in our downtown area.
Grace?
Thank you, yes, thank you again for the presentation. Could you clarify on the enterprise zones, who or how those are decided? You say that one is through the city?
Yeah, it is. So really, any business that qualifies for our program and they have to be doing, for a home, for Think Urbana, it has to be at least an $80,000 home to qualify. For a commercial business, it has to be at least a $100,000 investment to qualify for the program.
But you're saying the city established where those enterprise zones are?
Yes.
Okay. Because looking at the map, I have quite a few concerns on that. Is this a recent one that's on your website here? When I'm looking at South Urbana in particular, with my point here as it relates to, like for example, we talked about Philo Business District and talked a lot about the Pines and the Meyer area. To me, that's not what I would consider, you know, it looks like the state defines enterprise zones as place that's economically depressed area.
Yeah, and when it was created, the people who created it, who were in the city then defined that out, that geographic border. So that's what I'm working with, the border that has been created.
So is there space to revisit that? Like Stone Creek entire neighborhood is considered this enterprise zone and not the areas on the other side of Philo?
Yeah, well, and when it was developed, I believe to incentivize new houses going in to raise the equal assessed value of the city. And it has worked because we've had a lot of new investment in that area as well as other residential areas, which was why the zone was created to incentivize new growth, new buildings that would add to our tax base and give the city more property tax revenue that then could be used to help in other areas.
Okay, so yeah, it looks to me like there's some room for revisiting that, if that's a possibility on this map. From what I'm seeing in South Urbana, what's considered the enterprise zones is not what I would consider economically depressed area versus the ones that aren't included. And so with that too, along the Philo Road area, I understand that there's, you know, room for growth in the Meyer and the Pines area. But I think really further north on Philo Road is really the areas, which I know you mentioned, some development there and getting some of those vacancies filled. But I just, I don't see how some of that business center, not all of that business center is included in the enterprise zones and the Pines is. And it seems to me that the Pines Shopping Center is not somewhere I think would need that economic help as far as looking at equity in an economically depressed area.
I'd have to go back and look at the history, but I believe when the enterprise zone was created, that was all just empty fields. So there was nothing there when the enterprise zone was created and it incentivized that growth of the Pines and Stone Creek and all that new development that's come in.
Carol?
I'd just like to help bridge this, which is, this is, now we have something specific to explain this idea of this interim plan. I think some of the things that you're expressing are, you know, like maybe we have to revisit where the enterprise zone is because we have been successful and maybe we need to rethink, okay, where do we need to have incentives now? Because that's the kind of transition you would see in a comprehensive plan. You know, those are the big movements that take place. Another thing on Philo Road that we discussed as a group was, if you look at what's happening on Philo Road, the reason that we decided to focus on the Pines and Meyer is because those are not going to change and there are opportunities still there. I mean, there's outlots at Meyer that haven't been developed. However, the Philo Road, what people call the Philo Road Business Quarter, is actually changing quite a lot. It used to be, have more of a retail focus and now it's changing into a more of a service business and some offices. That's another area that I think in the comprehensive plan, there's going to be some rethinking about what is this area wanting to really be? And so that's why we decided to just try to stabilize Philo Road and make sure that we're, you know, if there's empty storefronts, that we're helping to fill them, but not do anything too dramatically different because we feel like there's going to be some change that comes through the whole comprehensive plan. So just to give, I mean, your points are well taken. It's just that we weren't going to fundamentally change anything, just work with the situation as it is for the moment pending completion of the comprehensive plan. And don't forget to talk about Save-A-Lot before we close this out.
Councilman Wilkin, regarding, you know, as Steph said, these were created 15 years ago to get those areas activated. The Pines now is, has done very well and is pretty much full. I know, I think the last time we checked, there was one vacancy there. So it really has been successful. Yeah, I think it is time to, yeah, okay, where can we look again to, in different areas to have that same impact? Stone Creek, when you look at that now, you think, okay, well, they're having a lot of success. Most of that success has occurred very recently. There was an initial build out there, but now after the university has taken that property, I think they started out with 104 empty lots and they've now sold over 70 lots just in this past year. So that's helping spur that growth and hopefully we'll see that density and get that place to fill out as well. Talking about the Meyer properties, you can see from this map, these kind of rectangles that you see surrounding Meyer are all outlots that are available and they are not advertised publicly, they're not on brokers' lists. So what we've done, we've talked, we've met with our Champaign-Urbana brokers, they have an organization, we've met with them and told them about these properties that are out there. Stone Creek, Myra Ridge, South Ridge, all the neighborhoods around there, they're getting built out and that's going to help us attract these other businesses to this area because there's now that density. So it feeds on each other, you know, we get that residential density, then that's going to help us attract more businesses and services for those communities. So anyway, there's about seven outlots there. And again, we found out what they are, we've got, we are talking with their real estate person up there and we're pairing them. If we get leads, you know, we'll give them to them. So you bring up excellent points and I think as Carol mentioned, the comp plan really needs to focus on, okay, yes, going forward, where do we go? And this is just an interim plan until we can get to that. So I think you bring up very good points.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying that. And I understand that, you know, if you're looking at development and tax revenue increases, and I think that we also have a wider lens of the type of growth that we need to consider as well. I mean, one could say that that's building more wealthy suburban, spread-out, car-dependent development. And so I think it's just things to consider also, the type of growth and not just the dollar amount of revenue. And then another thing while I have you here, I had a question about the public hearing on TIF that was earlier tonight. Was there information? Because I thought stuff came to council just saying on if we were going to do this hearing or not, and now here's the hearing. But has there been a draft? Like is there any information for the public to reference what this hearing was about?
Yes, multiple mailings have gone out and several public notices have gone out. And I'll be coming back to you in two weeks with the plan and a resolution to consider for adoption.
Can you tell us where that is? Because it's not like part of, usually there's a link for what the public should look at.
Sure, it's moving one-third acre out of TIF II. It's private property, moving it out of TIF II and moving it into Central TIF. And the reason we're asking to do that is because TIF II is going to expire at the end of 2022. And when that happens, Central TIF and TIF IV will not touch anymore. And if we, if we move this one-third acre, which is a teeny tiny part that isn't touching, if we get them touching, then the city has the flexibility, if they want it, to port money between TIF II and Central TIF. So I'll be bringing more information to you on that, but that's the reason we felt it was important to bring that to you before TIF II expires because once that happens, we couldn't do this change.
Thank you. My question is, is there a document or a link for the public or council to reference? My question is, is there a document or a link for the public or council to reference, or it's just that verbal description we've been given?
I have a map and I have a copy of the development that's been on file with the clerk for over a month now, with, because it's kind of been a lengthy process that we've gone through, but I'm glad to send you a copy or anybody who wants a copy. It's been publicly noticed that it's available, and I could email anyone or send you a copy. I'm glad to do that.
That would be great, yes, I would love that. I'm still very confused on what the proposal is here. I think I would be curious in what funds would be transferred and why, what is the need for that and on what occasion, and some more details about why those would be shared between the TIF districts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chandra.
So one of your desired outcomes in the downtown area is to create a destination identity that incorporates Urbana arts and culture. Would that outcome be impacted by the vacancy that Rachel Storm has left?
We're still very much believe in the viability and the importance of arts in Urbana, as I hope you do, and we are evaluating the program now and the needs and revising the job description, and we intend to replace, to post that position and replace Rachel.
Do you have a timeline for that?
I hope sooner than later. Her last day is next Tuesday, and so we've been working on it and talking to her, and we're going to be talking to commission members, arts commission members, and just making, being very thoughtful about how we want things to go and what we want that position to be moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
I welcome your feedback, all of your feedback on that.
And also with utilizing the Urbana arts and culture to, you know, create that destination, some things can be done until that position comes, or becomes filled. We do have a lot of wonderful murals and paintings and public art, and what we wanted to do is tell that story better by creating brochures, by connecting it to businesses and things of that nature, to make sure that people are aware of all the beautiful art that's there.
And if anyone just saw, Smile Politely did an article on the new apartments, that was privately funded, that apartment owner did that himself, he did not get a grant for that. So what this program has done is now it's outreach into the private sector, and people are seeing value in what a mural can do for the public and just the vibrancy of their community. So just wanted to point that out, that that was funded by the apartment owner, and it's great to see that private investment is happening now.
Anybody else?
Do you want to bring it up?
So I'm going to turn to you to, if I could just add this one thing, because we got a couple of questions, and I had mentioned that we would address it tonight, so I don't want to, I don't want to depart without having addressed it. We had gotten some questions about Habitat for Humanity looking to, for a new location for Restore, and people were concerned that we had somehow, I think, missed an opportunity at the Save-A-Lot site to get the Restore in Urbana. So I'll let you tell the rest of the story.
I'll give you the background, as we've experienced it with the Save-A-Lot property, it's owned by Neiman Foods, and when it became, first of all, the store closed, that was very public, and we reached out to the owner to see what their plans were for that. We found out, of course, that they were going to sell that property, we found out what the price was, and we started actively promoting that. It had, that property has some affordable housing incentives that are tied to it, so we really focused on, you know, apart, people that could develop apartments there, mixed use housing, affordable housing, et cetera. We reached out with that. In the meantime, we were, we had heard about Habitat, and we gave them, I gave them the information for Neiman Foods to reach out to. However, when they reached out to them, there was already a letter of intent for the use to sell that property. Letters of intent, as you already know, they're not legally binding, but that's usually the first step in an agreement with, between an owner and an investor. So there was already a letter of intent. Habitat had, and I talked with a board member before this meeting, just to clarify their chronological order of things, they had already been talking with Neiman about the value check that they ended up closing on in Champaign. They had been in conversations there, but then when the Save-A-Lot property came up, they really wanted to look at that. According to the board member, that property, the Save-A-Lot, really fit them better, it was a better size, and of course, it was cheaper. The site in Urbana was about double that. However, because of that LOI, they started continuing the conversations on the value check property. We then made them aware that Save-A-Lot, or that the Salt and Light property was up for sale. We saw some synergies between Habitat and Salt and Light, hoping that maybe there could be a partnership there. Again, we did make Habitat aware of that, however, again, they were down the road with the value check property at that time, and so they've, like I said, they've already closed on that. Salt and Light has since been purchased, and Salt and Light is staying there, which is great to see, so that was good news. But that, the Save-A-Lot then, that ownership is, they had a contract with, they do have a contract with them now, that when they find, they have a certain timeframe to get tenants into that space before they actually close on that sale. So the sale has not closed yet on the Save-A-Lot building, it's pending these tenants that would go into that building. And from my understanding, the potential buyers for that property, one, you're already aware of, they're talking about the Octapharma, and then the other half of the building is for another tenant, they can't reveal the name of that, but it is a retailer that would go into the rest of that space, but it's pending the Octapharma going in before they can then nail down that second tenant that would go into that space. That's what we know at this point, but yeah, we were very aware of Habitat and making them aware of the properties as they became available.
Okay. Is that about it? Thank you very much.
We'll send this PDF to everybody, and feel free to share that, and we appreciate your feedback as you have a chance to review.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2022-08-060R, a resolution authorizing an extension of time for a temporary or experimental traffic regulation, one-way eastbound traffic on Goose Alley from Race Street to 200 feet west of Broadway Avenue, and you sit on the floor.
Thank you, Chris. I think my presentation will be shorter than the name of the resolution. Want to be brief, just, we have Public Works in the Police Department through Traffic Commission, we implemented a temporary regulation on Goose Alley to make Goose Alley one-way from Race Street towards Broadway, and this is a consequence of the private event space that's been, that's occupied in half of Parking Lot Number One, Parking Lot Number One being located in the southeast corner of Water and Race Street. And so we implemented that, you know, the city ordinance allows the Chief of Police and myself to implement a temporary traffic regulation for up to ninety days. So we put up the one-way signage back in the middle of May, it's going to expire in the middle of August, but the private event space in Parking Lot One will continue through the end of October. So I come here asking council's permission to continue the one-way signage until that event space is done at the end of October. Are there any questions?
Okay, I'll wait. Mary Alice?
Can I make a motion?
Please.
All right, I move Resolution Number 2022-08-060R, resolution authorizing an extension of time for the temporary or experimental traffic regulation of one-way eastbound traffic on Goose Alley from Race Street to 200 feet west of Broadley, sorry, Broadway Avenue to City Council with a recommendation for approval. Second.
Seconded by Chair. Okay, any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, can we do a voice vote on this?
You can.
Okay, let's do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it unanimously, that will go to the next council meeting. And now, finally, the discussion about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer system. Councilmember Hershey will be joined by Alderman Robert Lewis and Sharice, as soon as you're ready, you have the floor.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to apologize to my constituents that came out to support this presentation and had no idea it would be so long in the making, getting here. Before I start, I'd like to introduce Robert Lewis. Robert Lewis is a former city councilperson for Ward Three as well as a civil engineer that has worked on different projects in the city and around the country regarding situations like this. The other thing I would like to say before I start is, because so many of you are not really familiar with Ellis Drive subdivision, I just have a few bullet points that I want to make. Ellis subdivision was a new concept at the time it was built. As housing for African-Americans, African-American residents of Urbana and Champaign was precarious at best, within, not just Urbana but Champaign as well. During the time when, or the history of this time when Ellis subdivision was built, there were still federal rules of redlining, which made it difficult for middle-class black families to buy their own property. Local banks in the area were not helpful in assisting people in mortgaging loans and getting mortgage loans, or local realtors were not good at assisting in finding properties, not to mention the fact that racial covenants attached to deeds and titles also prohibited black families from buying or owning property south of University Avenue. And the city government was not much different at that time in cooperating and allowing those types of rules, regulations, so forth, to go forth. So landowners, area landowners and local developers also abided by any uncodified or codified ordinances and such that would be helpful in that, at that time. When Ellis subdivision was built, it predated Civil Rights Act, it predated the Voting Rights Act, it predated any legislation that would even consider fair housing. So it was basically built to house, hopefully, the middle-class black families that could possibly even afford to buy homes in Urbana at that time. The Ellis subdivision is still unique in the sense that many of the original owners, that original people that bought those houses, they and their children, some of them still live in that subdivision, they've not moved. They may have bought even other properties in the area, and their children live also in that subdivision. This is an issue I know that's gone on for almost a decade, and we have other, different documentation and different way of looking at how this could be dealt with from other, another point of view. So I won't, without any further ado, I will start with the Ellis, Dr. Ellis subdivision. Ellis subdivision of Urbana consists of basically three planned areas built to supply affordable homes for mostly middle-class black residents of Urbana. Subdivision One, Ellis Drive, consists of the building and construction of the street and homes of Ellis Drive, east and west. And if you, later on, you'll see what that means, between Romine Street and Goodwin Avenue, which runs north and south. I put 1961 because that was the year that it was approved to be built. Subdivision Two, Tremont Street, Eureka Street, et cetera, meaning Beardsley on up through Bradley, because at the time, the subdivision one was built Bradley, Bradley did not go all the way down to Goodwin, so it was, it was cut off at a certain point. And it consists of the extension of Romine Street and Goodwin Street and building and construction of homes and streets on Tremont and Eureka, and moving on to Beardsley and then even up to Bradley. Construction and completion of the subdivision took place during the 1960s through the early 70s. And this is a map that Tim Cowan also had in his presentation, but it's basically a map showing you the different, the different, what I mean when I said different subdivisions. If you look at the olive green area, subdivision one was annexed in March 1962, the lime green area was built later, okay, and that's the continued part of Ellis, of Ellis Drive, and it was annexed in February of 1963, and I put the ordinance numbers underneath all of those. And by the way, everybody does have a copy, a hard copy of this too. Then there's one lot number 86, one house, that seemed to have gotten lost in the bunch, and that was on Eureka Street, and that was annexed in 1968, and according to the rest of the legend that Tim Cowan had provided for us, the, according to the rest, the remainder of the Ellis subdivision two, which is pink, was all annexed in 1969. This is a city ordinance that I found while I was researching, and the ordinance itself states that a contractor, subdivider, or any person or persons or corporation shall not be permitted to connect any sewer unless all the area to be served by such a sewer connection or outlet shall be previously annexed to and form a part of the city of Urbana. This is an ordinance that was approved, voted on during the Weaver administration in 1959. It further states that there should, no permit shall be issued to authorize any connection to a city sewer unless the area to be served by such connection or outlet is a part of the city of Urbana. It goes further and says such annexations shall not be made unless the sewer or sewer systems be connected to the city, to be connected to the city sewer is approved by the city authorities after the allowance of adequate inspection by the city authorities. So we have subdivision one and subdivision two, which, not finding a whole lot of information on the developer or who should do what, but coming across it piecemeal. And while I was finding this information, I was grateful that other information was found regarding the sewer system of the Dr. Ellis subdivision. So the Ellis subdivision one caught the interest of cities of Urbana, Champaign, and the State Sanitary District Board due to the unique design of the sanitary sewer system. The subdivision sewer system was designed to develop a fully gravity flow system without mechanical support, meaning a pumping station. This design was This design was put in place in Ellis subdivision with the hope that it would be used in future developments. And I outlined an area from a letter that was, correspondence that was written, outlining their, the interest of the city of Champaign. And how they were in hopes that that sewer system would be successful so that they may also be able to, to take advantage of it. And I documented it is where I got that from. And this is what the design of the, of the sewer system was supposed to look like. And if you'll notice, some of the piping is where it says it's resting, it rests on undisturbed soil. And it's specified for, even if you look at the, at the illustration, that the, the top part of it, that is soil and not street or asphalt or concrete. So this is our, our tiny little first subdivision. So the developer did not comply with the approved city plan. If one looks carefully at the, at one of the approved section view, you will notice that the location is as shown on the plan view. There's an easement drawn for all public utilities. There's also access, there are also access easements drawn. Property lines, setbacks, and plot points are also drawn. There is no easement in the front of the property, which is where our sanitary lines run at this point. And if you look at your own copies that you have, you might be able to actually see where it says easement for public utilities behind the houses on Ellis, the south, south part of Ellis and the north part of Ellis, where it says easement for property, for public utilities. Also the houses behind Romine. It says easement for property, for public utilities. And this is the, the approved plan. And the approved plan was approved, if you look at the dates, on April 30th, 1961. You have signatures and dates of Enos Phillips, who was the chairman of the plan commission. You have a signature and date of Stanley Weaver on May 1st, 1961. And is attested by Bess Holmes, who was the city clerk at the time. And Matt Kinsch, who was the city engineer. At the bottom of the page is the signature of John Goodell of Goodell Engineering Associates. And the city seal is on, next to, and validates all the signatures, next to the signatures. When the developer decided to start building the state, because this was not a home rule moment at the time, this, Urbana was not home rule. Everything had to go through the state, the senate, the state, you know, water, the water board. And so there is specifically on this permit that says, if you look at item number two, there should be no deviations from the plan and specifications that's submitted unless revised plans and specifications shall first have been submitted to the sanitary water board and a supplemental written permit issued therefore. I looked, I tried to find and could not find any, any kind of other correspondence where the contractor or the city made, asked for deviations. Go ahead, Robert.
Well, when we looked at this, I looked at it pretty deeply over the last four months. And I was looking for basically what criteria a contractor would have to provide to the city with regard to change notices, approval documents. Unfortunately, we couldn't find those, but we did find that the state board of sanitary districts was heavily involved because at that time, they were calling the shots. And they were the ones that you had to get the approvals from because of the sanitary system and what they were trying to achieve at this particular site. As I noticed in the drawings, as you saw earlier, it was not underneath the pavement. It was behind the homes. You don't have it before you, but I looked at the plumbing, the plumbing, the plumbing ordinance and plans that was developed by the city. I think it was 1959, 1959, yes. Plumbing ordinances, very well documented, well done. Unfortunately, people did not comply with it. At this time, just to give you some history, they use ceramic tile. They use ceramic tile with bells on it that connected with, with basically wire, with rope and all kinds of things. It was antiquated plumbing system, but that's what they had to work with at the time. But the documents that the city had at that time were very clearly articulated. And they were articulated based upon what they were trying to do at this time was to develop the system that was fully gravity flow, which had not been done, and not require a pumping station. So the designer, the design engineer, his intent was to put it in soil so as to make adjustments, if necessary, in the flow. To make sure it is going to do the job that they want it to do. That's why it was set up to go where it was set up to go, behind the homes. And if you go to Dr. Ellis subdivision, you'll see that most homes had access to the rear of the home where the vents are in the back for the air vents for sanitary going out. It would've been the north side of the houses on Ellis subdivision. That would be the close proximity to where the easement had been set up originally. The housing that would develop after that would be in the reverse. And they would both be in soil, not in, underneath the street. That was the point of this document from the state regarding how they want it to be. And they didn't want deviations because if they had to make adjustments, which they did, they made adjustments in the design of it along the way when they added to the east. And it was in elevation, not in location, left, right, north and south. That covers most, covers this document, right? It was deep. I had to go pretty deep to get that one.
So Goodell Engineering and Mr. Lewis kind of, kind of hit on to that. We believe wanted the easement behind the houses for several reasons. And one, one was of course, easy access to the uppermost laterals for future houses when they would be built as the streets would be added to, from each, from each street. So that the back of Ellis Drive going north, if you have the sanitary laterals and the uppermost laterals going through the backyards, then the backyards from Tremont would also meet that and there would be easy access and equal access. And the other thing is that there were also cleanouts that were put in that design so that should the city have to do any, any kind of access, it would be easier for them too. And it's a whole lot easier to tear ground than it is to tear up concrete, asphalt, so on and so forth. So our contention is that if the, the original plan had been adhered to in the beginning, we probably wouldn't even be talking to you today. So we're not here to beat up the city of Urbana or anything like that because this is before your time, most of you, at least. But we do feel like there should be some kind of, of collaboration, cooperation, collaboration, I guess. And so a solution to the Dr. Ellis subdivision requires a commitment by the city. And is acknowledged that this problem is not caused by the city administration, but it is a problem that has been inherited. Is also one that needs to be rectified. And that while researching this information, we were unable to locate as-built documents, change notices, and/or ordinances allowing the developer to deviate from the approved plan. And based on the fact that the original approved plans were not adhered to, the city of Urbana enabled the deviation of the plans because everything regarding sanitation, hookups, so on and so forth, would require them to authorize it. So somehow inspect it. So that somehow it was, that was allowed. And that resulted in the inequity of repairs of the sanitary sewer system by homeowners and subdivision, not really knowing the layout of the sanitary sewer lines in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. We do have a solution that, that we propose. You want to discuss this, Mr. Lewis?
I can discuss it, yeah. I can, I want to go back a little bit and, and as I reviewed all this documentation, with my background in engineering, I felt that somebody dropped the ball, obviously. And there's a lot of entities involved at that time. But the primary entity was the state that was calling the shots. And for whatever reason, the people in the engineering department at the city of Urbana at that time took it upon themselves to make these adjustments. And to cover that, they didn't cover the documentation. So out of sight, out of mind. And here we are, 100 years later, trying to figure out what they did. From a design standpoint, they blew it compared to what the state was requiring. And that was to make it equitable for the people. They tried to set it up, the engineers tried to set it up that way. And unfortunately, when I looked at the plotting plans and the layout of the various sewer lines and what the engineers provided in documentation, they were all over the board. Underneath the pavement and each different street, which caused a total chaos in terms of trying to get it set up for the people. And it would behoove the city to make these adjustments. I did a quick sketch to show how it could be done without causing a whole lot of havoc. Theoretically, they need to replace all the lines. And I don't know what that would cost today. But I know there's two lines that do run, according to the latest documentation of surveys that I've seen, that do run in, in the front yards of people. Those are the ones that need to be corrected, period. Put it all the way under the street, wherever it has to be. The rest of them, you can make cleanouts on both sides to make it equitable for both north, the people on the north side of the street and the south side of the street. But as you notice in my drawing, I put each location of each one of the lines where they were based upon the latest documentation we had on surveys. Each, each street has a different location. And they're labeled below. And I showed how a hookup would be just on one. But Bradley, Ellis.
Beardsley.
Beardsley.
Eureka.
Eureka.
Tremont.
Tremont, all of them. They're in different locations. The ones on Tremont are the ones that, the ones that come the closest to you and run into front yards according to the surveys. I only had documentation on pins that I knew were pin locations for the layout of the lots. When I saw those pin location and compared those pin locations with the actual locations that they determined where they were, if you run them parallel to the street, the street curved and it didn't. That's, I couldn't, as much documentation as I could find. It looks like it runs to that and it would run into the street. And they recognized that in the engineers later on in some of the letters we saw. I saw a letter from one of the engineers that were at the city. And they said that in order to make these changes, that the city would have to change their policy on how they do this. And thinking back on what I was looking at, when I was on city council, I was on my way out. And I did not have the time dedicated to try and look at all this data. And I'm glad that Charisse has had the opportunity to have engineering take a look. And they found out they didn't have what they need. And that's obvious to me that they didn't do the job that they wanted to do in the first place of do it like the original drawing specified. So it created havoc for all of us because somebody failed to do their job. From an engineering standpoint, I would've fired him, but I wasn't there at the time. But I think the council should realize, this is not, this is the tip of the iceberg. I was looking at some of the other, if they use this as an example, even though it was successful, but underneath the concrete, they've done it in other subdivisions throughout the city of Urbana. A classic one in point would be Myra Ridge. And I took a hard look at Myra Ridge. And some of the engineers saw the problem, saw where they were. And with the changes that took place in 1972, the probabilities for them to have a serious problem down the road would not be as critical as the ones at Dr. Ellis subdivision. In 1972, ASTM, material, everybody knows what ASTM is, right? But anyway, materials changed. And they required that you use ductile iron instead of cast iron. And also allowed you to use PVC. Before then, it wasn't possible. Which would, in a tree city, PVC would be very well received because you wouldn't get the roots and all that stuff in it like you would in the old piping systems. So they had an antiquated system and it was very well articulated in the 1959 plumbing plan. They followed that to the letter. That plumbing, plumbing plan itself paralleled what they used in the streets, in, in the alleyways of the streets north of Dr. Ellis subdivision. If you would go to north of that, you would see that they had alleyways. And they were perpendicular and they would run down the alleys. And all the utilities would run down the alleys. That's what they were looking for here without the alleys, according to that plumbing plan. And that's how Goodell Engineering set it up in the original plan. But somebody in their infinite wisdom decided, I have a better way. But not recognizing the potential problems they're creating for the people down the road. I'll let you have it from there. I'll go on all night. Anybody want to know those? I've been there for a while.
Well, and that was the other, what he just. What he just stated also is what I, is basically the, what the last thing I have to say.
I have a copy of Myra Ridge too here. I reviewed that one as well.
And that is the fact that Urbana is a tree city. And the picture that you see there is a picture of Ellis Drive. So if you look at all the trees that go down Ellis Drive, it is like that on a lot of the streets in Ellis subdivision. And so there are plenty of city trees in Ellis subdivision that can exacerbate the problem. And with this antiquated sewer system, and we're not asking for this sewer work to be done all at once. But we are asking that it be done and we're asking that it be paid for by the city. Now you can, we can seed money it with ARPA funds or it can, but we're not asking that it all be done at once. But we are asking it be done. And we, we think that it's just fair that we're asking the city to take responsibility for allowing a developer to change the subdivision without consulting city engineering. without consulting city engineering, changes that have been and could continue to have a harmful impact on the health and safety of our community. So we thank you for your time. And if you have any questions.
I'd like to make one other comment.
Go ahead.
This is nothing we, when I, when I would give, they gave me the assignment to look this up. I didn't, I didn't really want the job, to be honest with you. But because of my relationship with the city in the past, and I knew it was a problem, I said I'd give it one more shot. And I gave it 110% to look at it from an engineering point of view. And I did. And the more I got into it, the more angrier I got of my fellow people that are in the same, I'm retired engineer, okay, design engineer. And it was obvious to me what really happened. And they didn't provide you with the information you need. This is all information we got from the City of Urbana. Every document you've seen came from the City of Urbana. We didn't add anything or try to do anything, except for my little sketch in there to show I had solved the problem. But that puts the city in a very precarious spot. Because the engineers did not follow through with the original designs as specified. And it puts a burden on the city. Because if somebody were to take a hard look, as I looked, they will find the same thing. It was your documentation, not anybody else's. And the people failed you in the past. It's not your, it's not something that you created. But I noticed it when I was on city council with Mayor Marlin. We were there together. I brought it up. But I was on the way out the door. And Mrs. Clark was there too. And somebody failed to act then. And it's, it's before you now, and it's your call. I'm sure you have better engineering now than you had then. And I would advise you very strongly to stay on top of details like this from an engineering standpoint, because they come back to bite you in the future. I've had, I've been through in my lifetime, I'm old. And from doing structural engineering stuff and details like this, you have to go to court at some point in time for product liability and a lot of other things. And it's no fun. And your details and what you have available to you is critical. And as a city, you need to stay on top of it, 110%. That's enough, I'm done.
So we're free to take questions or comments or?
Any questions? James?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lewis, for coming out. And thank you, Charisse, for putting this together. Mr. Lewis, if I could ask a question about your drawing? That's the one that you're drawing, is that right?
Yes.
Would I be right in assuming that the fix that you're talking about is to replace those lines from the cleanout to the sewer system with PVC on each side?
It could happen theoretically. It mainly relies on, you're looking at two planes, okay? You're looking at, some cities have what is called upper laterals. And they do provide them. But the lateral you're talking about is the little circle in the bottom, okay? You see it says Ellis Drive, Ellis Lateral, it says that. That's running east and west. The others are running north and south, okay? That's the upper laterals. And what you would do is provide upper laterals to the lateral that exists with a cleanout on both sides.
So this would basically go along the street? And at each place where these come in like this, you'd replace those with PVC so that they would be resistant to?
Technically, you can make those connections now because they've got the clamping systems now. So you could cut it, cut the lateral, make those connections, and have, it'll be a T, like they call for the T. They told me a T one time was, it was on city council, somebody asked me, well, you just run to the T. I said, what if the T was downtown champagne? I got to run all the way down there to it? But they would establish a T, just like we have here, at each one of these connections, and run the upper laterals, the city would provide, with cleanouts in the space. There's a little, a minimum amount of space left, when I checked the dimensions of this right-of-way. And that could cause a couple of problems too, because it didn't come until later, like in the '72, I think. Where they added sidewalks, a little green space sidewalk. And they minimized them because they were running out of space because of the 60-foot range they were talking about. But theoretically, you can get in there. And it's, it's not complicated. It's just a matter of making the decision.
I'm just trying to get an idea of the scope of fixing it all, which sounds like a cut in the pavement and fixing the pair each time as you go along. And so you're going to have the road interrupted for each pair that you're fixing?
Yeah, there will be some interruption. But you don't have to do it immediately. But it's asphalt, it's not concrete. So it's going to be an easy cut, no matter how you look at it. But that's better than trying to take these laterals that are running east and west, that are at a very specific slope because of the gravity flow thing, and just tie into them and cut out the middle person, like the person of the individual at the home, trying to take care of this.
Yeah, this doesn't take into account anything between the house and the place where the lateral goes in.
All it does is put within their space a hookup in theoretically, the city's right-of-way, that the house from this side or this side can come to and hook up to.
Are those lines between the house and the lateral also ceramic?
A lot of them, yes, they are.
So they're still, they're having that issue too? And that's when people discover the problem? And that's when everything goes south, right?
Yeah, it goes south because, number one, the houses were designed to have the lines going north. But some of them have now switched it underneath the pavement, underneath the pad. And they got a cleanout out front. So that's problematic for the homeowner, because they didn't really know where they were going. So a lot of them have done that. I don't know how many have done that. But I know that some of them had removing trees in some cases. No, the whole tree.
That's true, the whole tree had to be.
Because it was in their front yard. And they said it wasn't there, but when they took the tree out, they found it, it was there. And that was just, those are the ones that's going to take a little more finesse to try to deal with. And they're on the upper Eureka? Eureka and Tremont, yes.
Eureka and Tremont.
When I started looking at dimensional plans for the, from the engineering department to locate that point, there's a number of points down there that you're not sure of. I didn't have enough data to plot it all the way. But from their plots, you could just do a projection, and you would see where it would cross the curve of the street. And they need to be taken care of some way, to reroute it, or wherever it is, make it sure it stays under the street and away from the home, and make the hookups.
All right, thanks, thanks for your patience in helping me understand what the solution looks like.
Anybody else have questions?
Thank you again for the presentation and all the research that went into this. It's very helpful to try and understand the whole history of it. Still trying to understand some of this. I need to, I think, learn more about cleanouts in the upper laterals. And I'll maybe have some better questions later.
I'll give you a class, you want a class?
I'd love that.
I'm just kidding.
So what I am understanding is that the main thing here about why there's responsibility of the city in particular is because the original plans weren't fulfilled, right? And totally agree that that's an issue and something to follow up on. And also just got me curious about, in general, who's responsible for following that up? Like, we approve a lot of things with the same stipulation that they have to follow the site plans. And even this one, it seems like their permit's revoked if they don't follow it, which I think it's probably too late to revoke their building permit. But I mean, does that make it not even a legitimate thing in the first place? So I guess that was one quick question about who's responsible for that follow-up.
I would like, I think there's some assumptions being made, and I'm not sure they're accurate. So I would really like, before you get too deep into solutions, to have an opportunity for Tim Cowan to respond to this. And I can point out a couple of things that give me pause and say, I think we need more information. So one of them is, if you look at the slide that shows the subdivision and shows where the easement lines are.
Sure.
So I don't know which, it's got, you have some language at the top, yeah, that one, okay. It says, as you have it here, the language, you have the third sentence, "There is an easement drawn for all public utilities." It actually doesn't say that, it says "an easement for public utilities." And it's an easement that's only five feet, it's five feet, and then they're doubled up, so that's 10 feet. You wouldn't be able to fit all public utilities in a 10-foot easement to start with. And one of the questions that had been raised, I'm going to say, two years ago, three years ago, was there was some sentiment that, there was some belief that some of the sewer mains were on private property. And through study that was done at Public Works, it was determined that they weren't on public property, which would mean that they were in, on this plat that's showing here, it would be in Ellis Drive, it would be in Romine Street. And so they're showing on Ellis and Romine here, both 60-foot wide right-of-way. The roadbed is only, what, I'm going to say, 30. So that would suggest that the main, where we were showing it, after the research was done to say that it wasn't on private property, is in the right-of-way, and no easement would be shown because it's in public right-of-way, it's a public utility. So I think, that makes me want Tim to look at this and say, is it in fact a valid assumption to say that plans were changed?
Yes, it is. I'll tell you why. On your engineering drawings that you have presently, they give you data, each engineering drawing, I don't have them here with you, that you have available, they give you a percentage of what was under the ground, I mean, under the street, and which ones, and a percentage that went away from the street. And when you go away from the street, you get into private property. Now, they give that automatically, engineering is already, this data already exists. I've got a drawing that shows where it goes. And they point it out specifically where they go and cross. And engineering's aware of this. It's right in their data sheet when they do the plan. And they realize they had a problem with that. When they're running straight lines on a curved street, they're going to have a percentage that crosses that threshold. And they give that percentage right on the drawing.
I still, I think there's a lot of merit to be had from having our current engineering staff look at everything that you have, some of which you have here.
I don't have it, you had it, we got it.
Okay, well, I just, I think there's another, I just don't want assumptions to be made.
I just need you to take a look at it and determine that for yourself.
Can I add something to this, though, also? I think the thing that bothered me is, in the conversations that we've had back and forth the past couple of years regarding this, is that the one thing that I keep hearing is that, well, that subdivision wasn't even part of, you know, it wasn't annexed. It wasn't part of Urbana when it was built. And then I read the sanitation ordinances from that time. And for all intents and purposes, you didn't, the city, I'm not going to say you, the city at that time did not follow its own ordinances. And its own ordinances even include an ordinance providing the regulations for a subdivision of land, it's 1957. But that's only three years, four years before this was beginning to be built. And it's still the same ordinance. There should not be any sanitation lines put down without that land being annexed to the city. And yet, I can attest to, when I look at, when I look at the dates on the annexation, and it says 1962, I'm going to take it all the way back to the little colorful thing there. 1962, when I look at pink, at the pink area, that's the rest of the legend. And it wasn't annexed until 1969. And I know for a fact that there were houses with working sanitation on there before 1969, because that's where my babysitter lived. So it, the city itself did not keep, hold to its own ordinances even. And that is one that I can say from the subdivision one. The definition of the subdivision. "No plat of any new subdivision shall be approved by the city council unless the same provides for and assures the construction of the subdivision of a sanitary sewer system adequate to serve the needs of the entire subdivision, when the same is fully developed and the location and design of that system has been approved by the city engineer. The Illinois State Sanitary Board and the corporate authorities of any sanitary district in which the subdivision or any part thereof has been located. This requirement cannot be applicable to any new subdivision which is not within the boundaries of a sanitary district or cannot be provided with sanitary sewer service by sanitary district or public utility." If you, if you have not, if you are not part of the boundaries, at least that's what it says, then that wouldn't be applied. So why would that be applied to something that hadn't been annexed? But your other, your other sanitary stuff says that in order for there to be sanitary systems, the lot has to first be annexed. It's, I don't know if it's confusing at best, as one would say, but.
It is confusing at best. The problem here is the fact that we didn't try to make up any, anything about this. This is all documentation you have available to you. And to me, it's clear as, clear as the sunshine. You can look at all of it, you can ask the engineering for more of it. We did look at letters that were written by previous engineers. Because I remember asking the question about, where do you go to the T? And I heard it in council telling me to go to the T. But I did find a letter that was written by an engineer, a former engineer of the city. And basically, they brought that issue to city council. And they said, we need to make changes in our policy. And I don't know, from his point of view, was it documentation? Probably, because it's not accurate. But the policy has to come through you guys first. And you have to decide on how these people do it. And you decide how you're going to run your ship. And back then, they didn't know how to run their ship. That's the bottom line.
Thank you, was I, could I, because actually, my question was, who follows up on the building designs after completion? If I could have that answered still, possibly.
Engineers that sign the documents.
Yes, okay.
Oh, you want, are you asking me or her?
When something's getting built, if it's going to get buried, then our inspectors go out before it gets buried to make sure it's in the right place.
Yes, my question was, when we approve something for, say, this in the past or even anything in the future, when we say, okay, here's your permit to build this thing under these plans, who's responsible for going out and checking that that actually followed the plan?
Our various inspectors.
Okay, thank you. And then one of my other questions, maybe more of a brainstorming, general question, is what was potential next steps with this? It seems like it would be useful to consult with Public Works staff and have some of this information laid out for them. for them, maybe get estimates on, you know, what would be the cost of some of these proposed things over what amount of time. I'm definitely interested in learning more of those details about it and in favor of trying to take some steps on this as we can. And would definitely like more information about some of the logistics on the proposed solutions and what would be the cost and timeframes on those. Thank you.
So Charisse and Mr. Lewis, thank you. This is a lot of really interesting information, a lot that you had to dig through and find. I think you make a really compelling case that, for whatever reason, it wasn't built the way it was intended to be built. That's kind of the upshot that I'm hearing from you.
Yes.
So where do we go from here? You also bring an interesting case in terms of maybe a potential solution that we haven't considered in the past. So Grace's question is, where do we go from here, based on what Carol had mentioned in terms of having Tim Cowan, who's the head of the Public Works Department, look over this? If you were open to it and if the city staff are open to it, Mr. Ellis, you have a great wealth of knowledge, not only in terms of city business, but also an engineering background. I would suggest that Tim sit down and talk with you about what your findings are. And maybe you guys can come to some kind of understanding, general consensus in terms of, is this a solution that could potentially work? Before we can go down the road of, how much money does this cost? What is it going to take? We need to first ascertain exactly what we're dealing with here. So that would be my suggestion for next steps.
It is, it is a challenging process from an engineering standpoint. I know what's involved. I would be more than happy to talk to Mr. Cowan about how he approaches this. And hopefully, he's the one that provided the information to us to review. So...
And some of it I found just online.
Just online. But it's, it's an engineering disaster, okay? And I can understand the people's concern. I'm a homeowner, too. Fortunately, I have an alleyway where mine is, and I had to tap into that. That's a good thing. I can do that myself, but I had to have the city inspector come out and take a look at it, make sure my flow was correct and all that crap. But it was done. And, but all of this information you already have, and Mr. Cowan is aware of it, but not necessarily in the detail way. The critical, it's good, good toilet, toilet reading, this is a plumbing plan for 1959. It's a big document, but it's very clear as to what you have to do. And I'm a stickler when it comes to details. I had to do structural systems as well. And you don't mess around with details. And the reason I think that the state was so involved in this is because of where they wanted it to be. And where sanitary systems are going today, you don't want to mess with them. Because they're analyzing stuff for humankind, they're tracking COVID, they're doing all this stuff right out. And I know EPA, when Mr. Gray was here, they changed the whole concept of what you have to account for when you pick it up from your big machines and all that stuff. So you can't play around with this stuff. This is critical stuff. And to have a system that's antiquated and falling apart, it's a tragedy for everybody. That's all. I'll be more than happy to have a conversation with him or whatever.
I just think it would be helpful to have both the city have a clear understanding of your analysis so that we can figure out a path forward.
I don't want to charge you any fees either.
Anybody else? Jay?
I want to thank you both so much for the time and effort you've put into this and to everyone who's been part of this conversation for a very long time. I think that, you know, having this expertise, this particular point of view, there was kind of a laugh when you said you're not going to charge, but that's a huge investment of your time and expertise for both of you. So I just want to acknowledge that. I think it's really easy to get kind of caught up in, when was it annexed? Who's responsible? But I also want to think about who we are as a city. This is part of our community that has been asking for help for a very long time, and we are given, being given a potential solution. So of course, due diligence, having those conversations with Public Works, thinking about what next steps should be, that makes sense. But I also think that the ask is so reasonable. It's not fix it all now. It's work with us. That's so little, right, to say, we want to be part of the conversation. We want to think about a sustainable way to fix this problem. And I think that the residents of Dr. Ellis Subdivision deserve credit for that, especially since this issue has been kind of pushed off and pushed off and pushed off for so long, to still have the patience to say, look, we need help, but we're willing to do it at a slower pace. We're willing to work with the city to think about how we fix this problem. And I know it gets very dicey of, we don't want to say who's responsible. I hear that. But what we're hearing is this is part of our community that is suffering and has a need that should be addressed. And so I think, yes, due diligence, we'll take that next step, look things over. But I think it's important to acknowledge all the hard work that has gone into this over many years and to give the residents credit for not giving up. It would be really easy to just say, you know, to go home in tears, to say, no one's ever going to listen, no one's ever going to help. And so I'd like for us to be the council that doesn't let these residents down again. Thank you.
Diane, did you want to?
Just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you, Charisse. We'll take this back, make sure people study this, look it over, work with you, and figure out what the next steps will be.
Okay, thank you.
Grace?
Sorry, just last one. I was debating keeping this for council input, but it is all about this item. So before, if everyone leaves right afterwards, just want to reiterate that, you know, I definitely see the importance of this discussion tonight. And thank you to the public who came and who have watched and been participating in all this. Jay said things much more concise and eloquently than I will, so I'll just agree with all of that. And I am interested in the possible remedies. And just wanted to also say for the agenda change tonight, that I was kind of unclear on the process and thought that traffic thing would be short, which it was, two minutes. And so I think for me, it was not out of not acknowledging the importance of this discussion, it was just kind of the logistics and the process of it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd just like to thank everybody for listening and for, I know this has been an uphill battle for, on a lot of ways. And it's also been something that's been repeated and brought, but felt it was important to bring a different, different information that, than what has happened before. And I think that, I think it's something that the council and city officials can better understand as to, as to maybe even why previous arguments, you know, or interests have been saying, discussing the possible racism of this particular issue because of the simple fact that this predates anything that any of you really have ever experienced in your lifetimes. So they're a different mindset, different, different way of looking at the world, different perspective on things. And for me, it was a history lesson. I'm going to be honest. And I love history. So it was a real history lesson. And when I had to think about just some of the stuff that my mother would say, you know, when talking to her about some of this and how difficult it was to get a loan to buy a house in a black neighborhood and no bank here would loan to them, that they had to go get their mortgage in West Virginia, you know, she and my dad. It's, it's, it's mind-blowing because that's not something I would have to deal with. That's something that several of you would never have to deal with right now. And it is, so I had to look at this, too, with a new set of eyes and from the eyes of a historian and not just the eyes of an alderman or a black woman, but actually looking at the history, you know, no city is perfect. No, you know, we all have our birthing pains. And so I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to lay blame or anything like that. It is, and it was, what it was. So we have to move forward from there, but consider the history of the time and what everything was back then. I can't apply what's now to what was back then and what, how, the atmosphere under which this subdivision was built. It's a whole, a whole other thing. So I really like, and thank you for listening to our presentation and thinking, taking that into consideration.
And as a former council member, I'd like to thank you all, too, because I didn't have a chance to look at it when I was there and this deep. But if you want me to do anything, just give me a shout or let her know and I'll be, I'll...
Yeah, thank you very much. I think the whole council really appreciates your effort on this. And I guess that concludes this presentation and discussion for now and takes us to council comments and communications. Anybody? Jay?
I want to take the opportunity quickly to kind of say something similar to what Grace did in not voting to move this up. I would have been in favor of moving it up farther in the agenda, and I should have clarified that. I also expected that the discussion around the traffic issue would be quick. So I apologize for not clarifying that, that aspect of this. I think this is something that deserved a lot of time and attention and I'm glad to see that we had a more thorough conversation tonight than I think could have happened if we were just trying to rush through it. This has been a pretty eventful meeting, so a couple other things, I think, to highlight. You know, we keep hearing about the SWF program. It's a great program. I do think it's important to recognize that some of the feedback that we've been hearing from council is coming from Parkland staff who directly work with the program. If that changes, I think that's important for us to know. But as of this point, we are not being given any information to suggest that they need any financial support. So we'll see, see how all of that rolls out. I also think that the, the presentation we had earlier today was an important one. And I'm sorry to see that folks who came to speak, many of the folks who came to speak on that issue have not been able to stay. I know that Amy reached out back in February about this. I was under the impression that we were considering already what a process for street naming would look like. I really appreciate her dedication, her diligence, her willingness to continue to bring this issue up with us. And I also think that it's important to acknowledge the folks who came to talk about Angie and the pain that they shared with us and to recognize that that was very courageous and meaningful contribution from our community members. And I think that, at least for myself, I would be more than happy to work on some sort of draft policy to make that possible. And I think a part of that could certainly be capping the number that we would do in a year to make sure we're not overburdening our staff who are already understaffed. But council's not in a position to address the staffing aspect of that. And so thinking about how we can take some of that work off and set parameters to not make it unduly burdensome on our staff, I think is important, too. So tonight was an amazing night in terms of participation from so many of our community members on a lot of really important issues. So I just appreciate all the input tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else have communications or comments? Mary, else, will you take the chair for a second?
Sure. The chair recognizes Chris.
Yeah. I just want to acknowledge a part of the Dr. Ellis subdivision story that isn't often appreciated or told enough. And that is the incredible dedication that Bishop Underwood and Reverend Underwood have done for, I can't count the years, maybe eight, nine years of coming here every week, Monday, putting in that slip to say, we need some relief. And like the famous, you know, woman bothering that judge and, you know, keeps bothering him and keeps bothering him. Finally, maybe somehow, some way, we're getting some progress made. I will tell you, this council is wanting to make an investment in the Dr. Ellis subdivision. I appreciate your compassion to say, it doesn't have to be all at once. It doesn't, you know, we'll work with you. You know, it's going to take some time and effort and, you know, we'll figure it out. So I really appreciate that. But I just want to acknowledge your dedication, your commitment, your steadfastness, your loyalty to this. So many years and so many Mondays, you've just, you know, been almost, you know, I hate to say it, ignored. And I want to appreciate Alderman Lewis for coming back and making the effort and doing the work that he wasn't able to do when he was on council. That's really critical. We have a lot of former city council members who have come back to help the city and it's nice to see. But I just want to say thank you, Reverend Underwood, and thank you, Bishop Underwood, for your patience and your dedication.
I could give the chair back or I could, I could also adjourn the meeting.
I was leaving, wasn't I? Yeah, anybody else have anything to say? Okay, that concludes comments. And with nothing left, we are adjourned. Thank you.